Good evening. The Board of Trustees' regular meeting is now called to order at four thirty P M. We welcome members of the public. Instructions on making public comment are posted in item one on the agenda. We will ask at each item if there is public comment. Trustee Deluna is traveling on board business and will join us remotely. As such, I will conduct all votes by roll call. The Board recognizes May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, which is a time to celebrate the rich history, diverse cultures, and significant contributions of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders to the United States. This month acknowledges their impact on American society, from building the Transcontinental Railroad to advancements in various fields. The month was officially designated in nineteen ninety-two to commemorate the arrival of the first Japanese immigrants in eighteen forty-three and the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad in eighteen sixty-nine, where Chinese immigrants played a crucial role. We have a new student trustee, Justin Dezon, who will take the oath of office in just a moment, and he will join the Board at the June twelfth meeting. Catherine, can you please do a roll call?
Absolutely. Student trustee Gonzalez. Go ahead. Thank you. Uh, trustee Kishinev?
Here.
Trustee Iverson?
Here.
Trustee Baker?
Here.
Trustee Deluna will join as soon as she can. Trustee Dodd?
Here.
Uh, trustee Rios?
Here.
And trustee Olson?
Here.
Uh, trustee Kishinev, will you please lead the pledge of allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands the nation under God, indivisible, liberally and just as well.
As we gather today, it is important to acknowledge that Napa Valley College and the surrounding Napa Valley sit on the unceded traditional ancestral and contemporary homelands of the Miwok, Patwin, who are comprised of three federally recognized tribes: K'ashele dehi band of Winton Indians, of the Kalusa, Kalusa, sorry, Indian community, the K'ashele dehi band of Winton Indians, and the Yocha dehi Winton Nation, and Wapo, including the Mishawal Wapo, also known as the Onasotis peoples. As part of Napa Valley College's mission of transforming lives through excellent educational and professional opportunities that are student-centered, equity-focused, and community-oriented, and in accordance with the college's values of accountability, integrity, inclusion, respect, social justice, and sustainability, we make this acknowledgement. We also affirm that this acknowledgement is insufficient. It does not undo the harm that has been and continues to be perpetrated against indigenous people, the land, and water. May we hold steady in our commitment to be in solidarity and in action to seek equity and justice with the Miwok, Patwin, and Wapo peoples. We are now going to adopt the agenda. If there are no objections, the agenda is adopted by consensus. Oh. We're going to pull item two, ten point seven, approval of updated CCAP partnership MOU, and put it on the agenda. Other than that, are there any objections? Okay, the agenda is adopted by consensus. Item number three, recognitions. Uh, we are going to start with a resolution honoring outgoing student trustee. Student trustee Gonzalez, can you please come up to the podium? While I read your resolution. Resolution twenty-five oh four of the Board of Trustees of the Napa Valley Community College District in honor of Cindy Gonzalez. Whereas Cindy Gonzalez was elected to serve as the student trustee of the Napa Valley College Board of Trustees and was dedicated to her role representing the Associated Students of Napa Valley College to bring positive change to the college community as a student leader from May twenty twenty-four to May twenty twenty-five. And whereas Cindy worked tirelessly in her advocacy for student success through her excellent reports to the Board, her thoughtful approach has helped her to attain personal and professional goals while holding herself to a highest standard of behavior as an elected official. And whereas Cindy served as the president of the Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society and was a key member of its award-winning Student Advisory Council, she demonstrated good listening and speaking skills and growth during her year of serving on the Board. She was influential among her peers and demonstrated a strong desire to make an impact on the campus community. She worked to enhance student life and build a sense of community on campus and advocate for student residence. And whereas Cindy's dedication, inquiring mind, collegial work style, and diligent dedication to organizing events to bring students together was of tremendous value to the college, Board, and student body. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the entire college community extends its appreciation to Cindy and wishes her the best as she continues to pursue her education. Uh, so Cindy, would you like to say anything, or do you want to? Yeah, I'd love to hear a few words from you.
Um, thank you all so much. Um, thank you to the Board, to the Cabinet members, and everyone who showed me so much support throughout the last year that I took on um, a couple of leadership roles at NBC. Um, I appreciate each and every single one of you for the big impact that you all had on my educational and personal journey. Um, so yes, thank you all so much. I greatly appreciate the opportunity to have been part of the Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Can I get a motion to approve this resolution?
Move to approve.
Seconded.
Uh, first motion by Baker and second by trustee Kishinev. Um, so we're gonna do a roll call vote. Uh, student trustee Gonzalez? Do you approve this resolution? Trustee Kishinev?
Yes.
Trustee Baker? Trustee Iverson? Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Yes.
Trustee Deluna?
Yes.
Alright, motion passed. Okay, uh, number three point two, swearing in uh, student trustee, Dr. Powell?
I state your name.
I, Justin Dezon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Into which I am about to enter.
Into which I am about to enter.
Thanks.
Trustee Dezon, Dezon? Is that how I pronounce it? Dezon. We're looking forward to having you at our next meeting in June. Welcome. Alright, item three point three, annual review and approval of privileges granted to the student trustee and included in Board policy. Catherine?
So these are the privileges that you approve every year. They're listed in the Board policy. You simply need to move to approve?
Uh, move to approve. Who did? Did you, Baker?
No, I didn't. I will.
I'll second.
Oh, are you?
Trustee Iverson moved to approve and trustee Rios seconded. Is there a public comment? Oh, wait. Yeah. Any public comment? No, okay. Um, roll call vote. Student trustee Gonzalez? Trustee Baker?
Yes.
Trustee Kishinev?
Aye.
Trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
And I approve. Is there discussion? I think I'm doing this out of order. Sorry, I apologize. I get messed up with the roll call votes. Alright. Motion approved. Uh, item three point four, Associated Students of Napa Valley College Officer Recognition. Um, Omar Peña, are you here to present this?
Hello, trustees. Hello, everybody. Thank you very much. I'll be very brief because I know we got a packed agenda today. But I just wanted to say it's always a privilege to work with the students on our campus and especially our Board for this, for this year. Um, you know, I think the, the word, the takeaway is growth and just seeing kind of like where we started and where we are now. It's always like you always feel, you always wish there was like a few more weeks or maybe a couple more months to continue because like it takes a little bit for the group to really get their stride. And I feel like we were starting to get into our stride right now. Um, one positive note that I did want to share that at least two of the members have shared with me that they're looking about, uh, looking into joining the Associated Students at their universities where they'll be transferring. And the majority of our students will be transferring, so um, we do wish them well. We do have two members that will be continuing with us, which are Neptali and Ashley. So thank you both for continuing. And for the rest that are transferring on, we wish you the best. And uh, and thank you.
Thanks very much. Uh, next item. Three point five, ACN VC trip to Washington, D.C. Excited to see this presentation.
Good afternoon, Board President Ginny Olson, Board of Trustees, Dr. Powell, and President's Cabinet. I am here to introduce four amazing students that attended the Leadership Conference in D.C. I'm honored to introduce them and share uh, their devotion, their commitment to their academic endeavors and learning and growing through their leadership experience. So first is Neptali Lona. You want to come up? He is the incoming ASNVC president for next year. We're so excited. Cindy Gonzalez, she will be transferring to UC Davis. Jocelyn Golanos Martinez will be transferring to UC Berkeley. Armon Gurr, transferring to UCLA. It is my honor to introduce these amazing students. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for having us today. Um, it was a great pleasure to go to the D.C. I've never been there, so it was like a really good first experience going there on a, not just going there to visit sightsee, but go there on a trip to try to make a effect on um, you know, for other students. And uh, I think it was a great experience. I always try, I try to recommend it to people. I was uh, as this year's upcoming president, that's how I was, I was trying to recruit people. I'm like, hey, you get to go to D.C., so uh, I try to share that with uh, as many people as I can. And we sure got a, we got a lot of people to sign up, so I'm looking forward to this upcoming year and hopefully we can um, do a lot. Thank you.
Hi. Um, I'm Jocelyn. Um, thank you for have, giving us the time to talk today. Um, so we weren't in D.C. for a long time, so we tried to make almost of every second. As you can see, um, we got to tour historical landmarks such as the Washington Monument and the Lincoln Memorial. And I think I can speak for all of us when I say it was truly inspiring and empowering to just be in the presence of such historical landmarks. We also got to partake in community service on our first night, or our first day um, at D.C. Um, and as you can see, we all wrapped our Napa Valley College sweaters. Um, and I think after that day, everyone knew us as the Napa Valley College students. So I think that was pretty cool. Um, and it, yeah, we got to pick up trash in front of the White House and in front of the Washington Monument, so I think that was a very fulfilling activity. And one of my favorite things, we got to meet government officials, so we got to step foot onto Mike Thompson's office, who is our representative in Congress. And we got to talk with his chief deputy of staff on student aid, which is, as many of you guys know, the education system. Um, is, yeah, um, but, but we got to advocate, I got to advocate for the Work-Study Program, which I am a part of, so I'm very passionate about that. Um, and just its continued funding and support, because I know the many students that benefit from it, such as myself. And then overall, we just got to grow as leaders, just being a part of this conference and attending all the meetings and listening in to the speakers and just getting overall um, background on what is occurring under this administration, especially in terms of its education. So overall, it was a very great experience. So thank you for supporting us with this trip.
So I'd like to say to how inspiring the trip was for each and every single one of us. Um, the first picture is uh, we're standing with the um, chief deputy staff, Adam Duran, in Mike Thompson's office. So that was a very surreal experience for me, and I'm sure I can speak for all of us, being able to go to the Capitol and meet with a um, government official and advocate for the federal, for the federal government to continue supporting federal student aid, like the Work-Study Program and the Pell Grant. So it was a very amazing experience, being able to go to Mike Thompson's office. And also the second picture, um, we're on e-bikes, so that was a really big part of our trip. We all were on e-bikes and it was a new experience for me, so it was really fun. And that was a really big highlight of the trip for us. And being at the nation's capital is very inspiring and very powerful, just to be able to see all the different monuments that um, I've always seen and read about in books and YouTube videos. So actually being able to be there was such an amazing experience for me and definitely very motivating, to say the least.
So after we were there, I feel so powerful up here. Uh, so we did a lot of stuff besides, you know, uh, the landmarks. We went to try uh, bateys, probably one of the good, to get some, yeah, so we found a local shop nearby. It's a really nice bar. We went and then got bateys. Then after that, our e-bike started biking around. And then we ended up at the Lincoln uh, Memorial. That was super nice as well. After Lincoln Memorial, you know, we went to the Capitol Building. That's me right there. It's a very bad photo of me, but I did a cartwheeling. They just took the bad, like, it, it, look at the actual photo. It was really nice. That just came out really bad. So I had a class that day and I needed to prove that I wasn't, you know, skipping. So, you know, I had Dean Robin send a picture of my teacher, um, professor at Trilio, just, just so I give him this surprise. So on that, we did a lot of stuff, you know, you know, school-related and like, you know, bonding. We got really close to each other. And yeah.
I'd like to say thank you to everyone on the Board and Napa Valley College. Um, this was such an amazing experience for um, all of us. This is definitely going to be one of my, like, greatest memories. I'm always going to think back to this and remember um, how much of an amazing experience this was and being able to bond with um, my peers on student government. And it was such an amazing experience. I can't put it into words. And I just think about it almost every day, how amazing it was. So thank you all for your support and I really hope that um, boards in the future can continue going to this trip. Um, I believe it's such an impactful trip for students and it just makes our work here that we do at NBC feel much more real and feel that we have a much more bigger impact. Thank you.
Thank you all for your uh, leadership and advocacy. I, I was so, so uh, happy to watch on social media, you know, as you were in Washington, D.C., receiving awards, doing all the amazing things. I have a, a feeling that D.C. hasn't seen the last of you. So, great job. Okay, we're moving on to action item four point one, Nursing Program and Resolution in honor of National Nurses Week. I'm gonna read a few lines from the resolution of the Napa, the Board of Trustees uh, for National Nurses Week, which is a time of year to reflect on the important contributions that nurses make to provide safe, high-quality healthcare. We are resolving that the Board of Trustees and the entire college community join to acknowledge and honor the nurse faculty, both full-time and adjunct, the Associate Degree in Nursing Program, the Psychiatric Technician Program, the EMS Program, and other nurses at Napa Valley College. Can I have the move for approval?
Move to approve.
Seconded. Uh, the motion made by trustee Baker and the second by trustee Kishinev, roll call vote, student trustee Gonzalez? Trustee Baker?
Aye.
Trustee Kishinev?
Aye.
Trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Motion passed. Next information item is outstanding Napa Valley College Storm Athletes, Jerry.
How's everyone doing tonight? Pretty solemn in here. Good?
Good. Excellent.
Uh, trustees, members of extended cabinet, and all these um, honoraries, honoraries tonight. Um, thank you for giving us just a few minutes to celebrate some of the academic and athletic achievements from uh, your student athletes here at Napa Valley College. I can't, I didn't memorize all of this. Yeah, you can scroll to the next slide. So um, this year we had a hundred and forty-two student athletes. That was a twenty-two point four percent increase from the previous year. Um, they carried um, an average of fifteen-plus units, so uh, Dr. Powell, your fifteen to finish is right on track with our athletic program. Um, and that was an increase of, if my eyes are right, over ten percent. Um, their overall grade point average was a three point zero five, which was an eleven percent increase from last year. So we're very, very proud of that. We're actually sending forward our women's basketball team uh, to the state for the academic all-state team. So they had a three point two eight GPA. Um, you can see now we're starting with the uh, presence of River Trail Village. Uh, quite a large international and out-of-state population within our student athletes. We had eight international students on our baseball team. We had five from Japan, two from Canada, and one from Sweden. Um, and we had approximately uh, forty-two student athletes move into River Trail Village in the fall of twenty-four. So um, that's been exciting. It's been a really good recruiting tool and we're continuing on with that. Uh, in the fall, we had seventy-six student athletes earn a three point oh or better, which was an increase of over twenty percent from last fall. And we had fourteen student athletes with a perfect four point oh GPA. So again, extremely proud of what they're doing in the classroom. And we had twenty-two student athletes earn all-conference academic honors this year. And then we're just gonna highlight a couple of our uh, student athletes. Nick DeVellis is a, a men's golfer from El Cerrito. Uh, he's got a, a QM GPA of three point seven one and will earn his degree in Business Administration this spring. Uh, Nick just finished up at the NorCal Championships this weekend and will be moving on along with uh, John Lawrence Papito to the state championships next week at uh, in Monterey. So we don't have to travel very far, which is nice. So congratulations to Nick for all his accomplishments. And then, oh, next one, one uh, the most proud individual since I've been here at Napa Valley College is Rose Jameson. Rose uh, came to us from Fairfield, from um, Rodriguez High School, and she's earned her degree in Administration of Justice and also a degree in Kinesiology. Rose has accumulated a three point eight nine GPA and has been on the president's honored list every semester she's been at Napa Valley College. Rose was also Napa Valley College's first-ever thousand-point scorer in basketball. She earned first-team all-conference and third-team all-state. And uh, she's definitely gonna continue on her academic and athletic career next year. She just has not decided yet where she's going. So very, very proud of her. Um, other than that, on the next slide, um, I'd like to thank all those involved in, in supporting athletics. Um, it takes a village and we appreciate every single uh, department on this campus that does help us. Um, and like I said last year, a little selfish promotion of the uh, Storm Cup that will take place in September, and that money raised is going to help offset costs at River Trail Village and not solely for uh, student athletes. I wanted to say that first. We gave out, Robin, quite a few scholarships last year for general students on campus that needed financial assistance. So if you could spread the word, I'm sure uh, trustee Dodd would appreciate it as well, as we're both involved in that very deeply. So thank you all. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Dunlap. Item four point three, Phi Theta Kappa Awards.
Hello, I am Kathy Gillis. I am an English teacher here and also the advisor for Phi Theta Kappa. If I could have my students come up here with me, I'll get to them in a second. Um, as Omar said, I, I, it's a great privilege for me to be able to work with students, and I think you all agree when we get to work with students. And thank you for sharing Cindy with us. That, she has been, she is our outgoing president. Oh, you're behind me, okay. I wanted to thank the Board, um, particularly uh, Dr. Powell, for working so closely with our students and really upping the game for our, our, our chapter. Also, um, thank you VP Mora and trustees Olson and Baker for supporting us at the induction ceremony. And thank you all for your support of the Honor Society. So I want to um, introduce our students. I'm gonna let them talk. They are, have a little slideshow here. And the little, we used to be called the Little Chapter That Could, because they worked so hard and won not just state awards, but also international awards. Um, also, any students that are incoming, come on up. So we have, um, I'll just introduce them briefly. We have our outgoing Boo Cindy, our president, who will be moving on, as you know. And then we have our new incoming president, Ashley Hall, and our new executive VP, Alessandro Martina, Martino. And we have our new, uh, of the students who could attend, our new VP of Finance and Special Events, Arlo Stein. So I'm gonna have um, Ashley come on up, or Cindy, both of you, talk about your slinging.
Hi. Um, so our slideshow, we wanted to kind of talk about the awards that we won um, this year. So we did a five-star chapter award, which is the highest award for overall work during the academic year. Our Community Project Regional Award, our Cultivating Leadership Regional Award. We also got second place, Most Distinguished College Project Award for our Nevada-California chapter. And third place, Most Distinguished Honors and Action Theme Award. And the theme that we chose for this year was Stories of Persistence, Resilience, Healing, and Sorrow.
Uh, so we also fulfilled the dream because we were able to attend the international convention Catalyst in Kansas City. And we uh, won the Allmark Award for Distinguished College Project. And we were nominated in the top hundred chapters among the one thousand three hundred top placing chapters internationally. And for that, in fulfilling our, our dream, we want to say a special thank you to our advisor, Professor Gillis, to Dr. Torres Powell and Alejandro Guerrero, Dr. Guerrero, for helping us and supporting us in every way possible. And to all administrators and staff at Napa Valley College that supported us. Especially, a special thank you again for Grace Angina, that helped us a lot with the, all the paperwork that we had to do. And thanks again for making our dream come true and supporting us in winning those awards.
And I would also like to highlight our incoming president, Ashley Hall. Her, her, I give her a special shout-out because she earned the twenty twenty-five PTK All-California Academic Award. So she is um, sorry, the twenty twenty-five PTK All-California Academic Award recipient and being in second place. So thank you so much, Ashley Hall. You are such an amazing um, executive vice president, and I'm so grateful to have been on the same um, team as you, Dr. Gillis. So we wanted to give you guys a few photos of our amazing time at our uh, regional conference and Catalyst. Um, and we also wanted to give Dr. Powell our um, Distinguished College Project Award, because without you, this would not have happened. Um, so we are very, very grateful for your unwavering support with this project. This is for you, from us.
Unless you all forget Dr. Powell himself won the Phi Theta Kappa Presidential Award. Thank you.
I just want to reiterate how proud I am of you all, uh, for the work that you put in. And the legacy of the uh, Student Advisory Council will live on for many, many years, and it's gonna continue to help us at this college. Um, I'd also like to say thank you to the Napa Valley College Foundation for their support uh, in establishing an endowed scholarship that's gonna allow us to continue to support uh, both membership dues for students and also the
uh both membership dues for students and also the travel to the international conference moving forward, so thank you to the foundation and the members of the foundation uh who have contributed to that cause, so thank you.
All right, uh next up, item four point four, Administrative Confidential Employee of the Year, Christine.
Good afternoon, everyone. I have the privilege of presenting this year's um Administrative Confidential Employee of the Year Award. Just come up here. The twenty-twenty-five Administrative Confidential Employee of the Year Award is presented to Christopher Chris Farmer this eighth day in May twenty-twenty-five in recognition of exemplary service and outstanding contributions in Napa Valley College. As Dean of Science, Mathematics, Engineering, and Library Services, Chris Farmer has demonstrated visionary leadership, a deep commitment to equity, and unwavering dedication to student success. He has been instrumental in the implementation of key initiatives such as Project Rise, Caminos al Exito, Program Mapper, and Early Alert, and is admired by colleagues for his insight, approachability, and calm, solution-oriented leadership. Selected as a twenty-twenty-five Administrative Confidential Employee of the Year, Chris Farmer is hereby recognized by the Administrative Confidential Senate in Napa Valley College for his extraordinary service and embodiment of the college's mission and values. Signed by myself and Dr. Torrance Powell, Napa Valley College Superintendent President, congratulations, Chris.
Oh, and on a separate note, we normally have a trophy that goes with this award, but as usual with the AC Senate where we come up with a lot of ideas, it was actually Chris who came up with a trophy that is currently being produced by the Maker Space to celebrate our students' work, so it's forthcoming.
Forgive me all, but you know you put me in front of a mic, you gotta, hello. So I I work in a library, so every now and then I stumble across a book, this one is called Honored But Invisible: An Inside Look at Teaching at a Community College. I thought I'd share a couple passages out of it that talk about being an administrator. This first one is about the, they were going out to do a study and they requested information from the institutions, they were gonna go talk to faculty of that institution, so. "In a few institutions, we asked administrators to nominate especially effective instructors and observed that both the nominated individuals and others who we chose, the results revealed how little administrators know about what happens in the classroom, and so we did not continue this practice." Sorry, that was for the faculty, you're welcome. This one I like too. "We'd be better off if they called in sick every day. It's really disquieting for me to say that because I think that we should all be working for the same thing, but for the most part, they're operating in some other fantasy world." I am operating in a fantasy world. I get to work here every day, I get to wake up every morning and I'm surrounded by amazing colleagues that are doing the right thing for this world and this place and making it a better, better place for everybody, so thank you. Everybody, I accept this on all of your behalfs.
Congratulations, Chris. All right, item four point five, acknowledgement of retiring employees. I'm going to read a few lines, or I'll read the resolutions for two um faculty members, Stephanie Burns and Daniel Clemmons. First resolution is for Ms. Burns, um where, Dr. Burns. Whereas Stephanie Burns began her educational career in two thousand and four and has been an invaluable member of the Science, Math, Engineering Division and the campus community for twenty years. And whereas Stephanie has been the program coordinator for biology since twenty-twenty-one, she served as the liaison for Turo University. And whereas Stephanie served as division chair for the Science, Mathematics, and Engineering Division from twenty thirteen to twenty sixteen. During her time as division chair, she filled the role with integrity and dedication to the division faculty and students. And whereas Stephanie has served on many academic senate committees during her tenure at Napa Valley College. She participated in and witnessed many changes through her role on the planning committee. And whereas Stephanie advocated for students to succeed by always placing students first. And whereas Stephanie promoted and supported the biology program by ensuring that she stayed current in the field. And whereas Stephanie has left an enduring legacy among her colleagues and students. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the entire college community join us in extending to Stephanie Burns our sincerest thank, thank you and best wishes as she moves on to new adventures. Is Steph, is Dr. Burns here?
Thank you.
Next resolution is for Dr. Daniel Clemmons. Whereas Daniel Clemmons has been, began his educational career in nineteen eighty-nine and has been an invaluable member of the Science, Math, Engineering Division and the campus community for twenty years. And whereas Dan has been an active member of the Biology Department and responsible for coordinating the curriculum in the department. And whereas Dan has served on many academic senate committees during his tenure at Napa Valley College. He participated in and witnessed many changes through his role on the facilities, curriculum, faculty standard, and practices, and student success standards committees. And whereas Dan was the recipient of the McPherson Distinguished Teaching Award in twenty sixteen. And whereas Dan advocated for students to succeed by always placing students first. And whereas Dan has always promoted and supported the Biology Program by ensuring that he stayed current in the field. And whereas Dan has left an enduring legacy among his colleagues and students. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the entire college community join in extending to Dan Clemmons our sincerest thank you and best wishes as he moves on to new adventures. Is there any public comment?
I'm back. Actually, uh broke my normal habit and I wrote something up here. I don't know if um, well, Dr. Burns hi, was one of the people that hired me, and Dan has been my rock for years uh being in the Biology Department, so try to keep it together. "Today we honor not just teachers, but guides, mentors, and builders of futures. In the lecture halls and labs of our community college, where students arrive with questions, doubts, and dreams, you both have been beacons. With every experiment, every late-night lab report, every moment you paused to explain, once more, you ignited curiosity and built confidence. You didn't just teach science, you taught wonder, you taught resilience, the quiet courage it takes to fail, to try again, and to find joy in discovery. Through your work, students who may never have seen themselves as scientists found their spark. You made science human, and in doing so, you changed lives. Not with grand gestures, but with steady, unwavering devotion. Your legacy is written not only in lesson plans, but in the lives of students who now walk stronger paths because you walked with them for a time. As you move into retirement, you may know this, the light you lit in others will keep burning. And though your classrooms may fall silent, the echoes of your impact will resonate for generations. To combine, Dr. Stephanie Burns and Dr. Dan Clemmons have taught two hundred and forty-three, oh, asterisks. I only have data back to two thousand and five, so this is not complete. But combined, Dr. Dan Clemmons and Dr. Stephanie Burns have taught two hundred and forty-three sections at this college. Amassing twenty thousand seven hundred and fifty-four classroom hours with four thousand one hundred and sixty-two unique students between the two of them. If I duplicated that, it would be more than seven thousand five hundred students taught. Amassing an amazing five hundred and fifty-four thousand eight hundred ninety-five student contact hours, half a million. They say, well, they don't say, Yates said that education is not filling of a pail, but the lighting of a fire. And Dr. Powell, members of the board, and the greater campus community, I submit to you that Dr. Dan Clemmons and Stephanie Burns, Dr. Stephanie Burns have set this college ablaze for twenty years, thank you for everything you've done."
Would anybody like to follow that and make a comment? Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Move to approve all of the resolutions, is that, can we do that?
The two, these two.
Just the two?
Mm-hmm.
Our timing?
Oh, all of them, yeah.
Oh, all of them, yes, there was four more, sorry, thank you. Trustee Baker made a motion and trustee uh Iverson seconded. Um roll call vote, student trustee Gonzalez. Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Kishanath.
Aye.
Trustee Deluna.
Aye.
Trustee Iverson.
Aye.
Trustee Dodd.
Aye.
Trustee Rios.
Aye.
Is there discussion? Motion approved.
I did wanna just give a little stand-up and applaud all of you guys, it's really for the students out here and all of you other honorees, so. This is why we're here, is for the students, so I really wanted to recognize our student athletes, Phi Theta Kappa, and our other honorees.
Thank you, guys, you guys make us proud, so.
Okay, item four point six, Dr. Ed Shank Excellence in Student Services Award. I am going to congratulate Gina Nakota. Alex, it says Gina here, Jasenya, oh my God, it's Jasenya Kota. It's okay, sorry about that, I was like, Gina, your sister. Yeah. Okay, Jasenya Kota, yeah. Congratulations on your award, so deserved, um I know that uh Dr. Guerrero spoke about you last, last month and we're just just wanna congratulate you again for your award and all your hard work and your commitment to this college, thank you. All right, item four point seven, McPherson Distinguished Teaching Award, Dr. Mora.
Yes, so we have two awardees this year, Kristi Iwamoto and Claudette Chateau, if you'd like to go up to the microphone. Please. And just a couple of words, um on May first, we had the opportunity to honor both of them as the McPherson Distinguished Teachers of the Year. At that celebration, they shared their ed talks, which provided powerful food for thought and inspiration for how to best support student learning. It is a pleasure to recognize them again tonight as the McPherson Distinguished Teachers at Napa Valley College, yeah.
Hello, I just want to tell everybody, my students that said kind words about me, my colleagues that said kind words about me, my friends that said kind words about me, but also I want to thank um the Board of Trustees, the Cabinet, and also the Foundation for giving me the opportunity to celebrate last week with my friends and family. It was a really powerful moment, not just for me, but it was a really powerful moment for my family and my lifelong friends to come on campus, see the diversity of our campus, um see the work that we're doing, the diversity of the work that we're doing. But also really powerful for my sons to have been there and to have witnessed that, so I want to thank you for that opportunity. Before you guys go into closed session, I did bring my award with me, so of course I have to take the opportunity to ask you for a photo op. If you guys wouldn't mind taking a photo with me before closed session, I would be honored, thank you.
I also wanted to thank everybody, thank the board, thank the administration. I thank my uh my co-winner Claudette for being such a great colleague. I, I think the most valuable thing that I've, that I got from receiving the award is just reminding myself that I am still good at doing what I was hired to do, which is to teach my students. And we get so caught up in so many of the other things that we do at the college, the other roles that we fulfill. A colleague said to me last week, he said, uh, remember, he points to my classroom, that's the thing you're good at, that's the thing you're hired for. And everything else is just because of that, and that really stuck with me, but thank you so much, everyone.
Yes, if anybody wants to watch it, it's on YouTube, you can find it on LinkedIn, @ClaudetteChateau.
Congratulations. All right, uh constituent group reports. Priya Sharma. Danielle Alexander, classified senate report. Okay.
So I've been serving on the board for three years, and I'm not gonna lie. This Tuesday was my life meeting, and it was very emotional for me just because I've been here for so long. And again, ASNDC has been like a great part of my journey at Napa Valley College, so it's been around me for three years, like have tracked my um my growth. And again, it's been such an honor to be part of Napa Valley College and being able to grow in such a way. And I just wanted to say thank you all for, yeah, supporting ASNDC, like allowing us to be here, and just supporting students in general. But that will conclude my report.
Thank you, Priya. I don't see Danielle Alexander here, Jasenya.
Hi, good evening, um no report for me today, thank you.
Christine.
Good evening again, um I have a longer report that's a fraction there, um but I just want to say like a few short words, um I would really like to take this time to commend my fellow administrators and confidential staff in another year. Um work by collaborative governance, student-centered initiatives, and inclusive leadership, which are priorities um that we established at the beginning of this year. So this year, our senate supported the implementation of our DAI self-assessment, champion participatory governance, and work in um uh the opportunity to use resources to expand EEO signing for managers. Our members contributed to major campus um planning efforts including initiatives for Vision 2030, um technology updates and test release projects, such as the Wine Education Complex, which is just growing every day. Um it's exciting. Community building was a big priority for our senate this year, um and you saw that, um for those of you who participated in the class event, appreci- appreciationally. Um their senate also maintains physical stewardship, um thanks to our treasurer, Solange Ada, who always kept us um uh responsible while funding employee recognition and professional development um for our senators. And we are especially proud to honor our vice president, Chris Farmer, um twenty-twenty-five Administrator Confidential Employee of the Year, and recognizing for his steady leadership and commitment to student success. So in person, I'm not, Chris and I both So, in person, Chris and I both started out as classified employees, um, at NBC three years ago, right? And I can honestly say that he is evidence of all the good things we can accomplish when we recognize and empower our employees, um, to do what they do best for students in our college. That concludes my report. Happy AAI here each month, and happy almost end of the semester.
Thank you, Christine. Uh, Matthew?
Hey, folks, really happy I'm here today for the positive energy in the room, just to see all the great work we're doing as a college to support our students. I'm blessed to be a faculty member here and to get support some of that in the classroom, but it's always nice to see how it happens at the institutional level through your work and our colleagues' work as well. Um, I'm gonna keep my report brief. I have attached a written summary that's a little more detailed in terms of its review. The Academic Senate assessed its priorities and the progress it had made in most areas. Um, I'm really proud of the work that the Academic Senate has been doing. I had felt in my first term that a lot of our work was really focused on policy. We sort of had a backlog to get through. Um, and in terms of the numbers, I continue to document those in my report. I can see in that year, we had approved over sixty policies. Um, I'm fairly certain that this year is reflective of that. We're all probably also moving through a number of policies as well. In addition to that, we approved the Fall Twenty Twenty-Five Flex Day Agenda. Uh, I know some of you attend those events, so I hope to see you in the fall. We also endorsed two applications for our wonderful colleagues who are retiring today, and I hope to see those on the board agenda for June. I do want to note that we successfully concluded our review of Chapter Four Policies, that is, sort of addressing that backlog of policies that we've had. I want to recognize Dr. Mora for working closely with me to make that possible, and all the work of the Academic Senate Committees and District Committees who undertook those chapter reviews. In addition to that, I do want to document some areas of interest or discussion within the Academic Senate. Um, there has been some concern about the decision to move our enrollment period from what would have started in May to August eighteen is now the identified date. There was an understanding that this was an effort to combat some of the fraudulent enrollment that we have been experiencing. We had some challenges even in the summer where, when opening registration begins, uh, most of our online classes, rosters fail overnight. We understand that most of these are not true actually enrolling students, they're fraudulent accounts. So in an effort to combat and slow that down, the decision was made within admission records to move the open enrollment date to August, therefore extending the time by which students could successfully verify their identification, go through the steps to enrollment, and successfully enroll at NBC. Our concerns as a faculty are that we know our neighboring districts of Santa Rosa and Solano have open enrollment now. Theoretically, students have fewer barriers. If they're interested in enrolling, they could directly enroll in those institutions, whereas for here, they have to come in person, they have to schedule the appointment, they have to go through the five steps to enroll, which we know presents barriers or challenges to students. Faculty are very concerned about how this may affect enrollment if we continue to hold to that date. We have had some verifications or indications at least that that, uh, enrollment date may be moved up, so it may be perhaps July or perhaps earlier. But we're still concerned about how this may affect long-term enrollment and growth. This has an impact not just on the students who are interested in taking those courses, but have to wade through those steps. It also affects cancellations for the faculty who are assigned to those courses, whether they're part-time or full-time. It also can have a long-term impact on the area programs in terms of scheduling for future semesters, so you can understand why the faculty are noticeably concerned about this decision that they felt they weren't consulted or had an opportunity to weigh in on. In addition to that, um, the Academic Senate is also interested in documenting a formalized process for class caps. Historically, over the past two years, a number of programs have been informed that their class cap was going to increase. There was some data presented that, um, there were historical variations in terms of these class caps, particularly within things like social sciences, where perhaps in the past they'd offer, um, a class cap of fifty, had moved down to thirty-five for different reasons, um, and then had not increased post-pandemic or within the past five years. And so an accommodation was sought, moved up to about forty or forty-five students. That being said, we don't have a formal process in place. A number of districts do have that within their bargaining agreements. Other places have that, uh, housed within their curriculum committees, making recommendations there. There's a wide understanding that this is a complex negotiation between the district and the faculty as well. Um, being that we don't have a formal documented process, we are concerned about how these decisions are made when the faculty get to weigh in. The Senate as a whole understands that this is directly within ten plus one purview. It is a matter related to curriculum and to classroom pedagogy and student success. And so we look forward to working with the district to establish a formal documented process, so faculty are included as a part of that consultation process. We believe we'll undertake some of that work over the summer and hope to make a recommendation, uh, in the fall. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. John Kinsel is joining us online for the Faculty Association Report. That's... Catherine? Oh, okay. Okay, Kristi?
I'm sitting over here now. Remember that other stuff I was talking about? Um, so, uh, I'm actually reading what John told me to read, which is, uh, that he wanted to say that we're excited and, uh, want to congratulate the faculty who won the McPherson Award, so. That's weird, but, uh, congratulations, Claudette. And, and also want to extend our congratulations for the retirements of our colleagues Stephanie Burns and Dan Clemens, and wish them well, and tell them how much we love them. Uh, negotiations are ongoing. Uh, I think it's been a year now since we had a contract, and, uh, we are we are I'm not gonna say cautiously optimistic, because I'm not optimistic, to be honest, and I don't mean to bring the room down, but we have one more negotiation session this year. And, uh, we may try to schedule others, but we are so far apart right now. And we've been at this for a while, and I don't see the, uh, the light at the end of the tunnel right now. So I have a feeling we'll still be talking to you about this in August. I could be wrong, and I think that the, um, the Faculty Association's priority is to honor the work of their members. It is to honor the promise, the shared goal promise of getting to the top third of salaries to match the cost of living in Napa County, and it is to honor the work of our classified brothers and sisters as well. And, uh, you know, we're going to negotiations with the best of intentions, and we are just hoping that the district does the same. And that is my report.
Thank you. Um, at this time, the board will devote a total of up to fifteen minutes to hear comments regarding closed session agenda items. Individual comments will be limited to three minutes. Is there any public comment? Okay, come on up.
Hello, hello, good evening. Uh, my name is Joshua Murillo. And, uh, first, just, uh, want to say congratulations to everybody who is being honored here, uh, and good luck to the retirees and their future, and the students, your future staying here, transferring. Best of luck to you, yeah? Um, it's not, um, I would rather not bring the room down more, but, um, unfortunately, we are where we are, and this is the comment I have with regard to your negotiations with the, the faculty union, yeah? So here we go. Good evening, trustees. Tonight, I'm here to remind you that every one of you is knowingly, knowingly and willingly breaking California state law, specifically the fifty percent law. The law is clear. According to, uh, California Community College Chancellor's Office, the fifty percent law as defined in Education Code Section Eight Four Three Six Two and related sections of California Code of Regulations, requires each district to spend at least half of its current educational expenses on salaries and benefits for classroom instructors. Um, yet, for at least the past five years, Napa Valley College has been violating this law. And I say at least because the previous, uh, head accountant was apparently cooking the books and no one seemed to notice. So how long this has actually been going on is difficult to say. Here's the part that's especially frustrating. Despite this glaring issue, the district's negotiators continue to put forward salary proposals that would keep us out of compliance with the law for at least the next three years. Why is that? Why are the proposals offered, uh, by the district? Oh, I'm sorry, I lost my place. Why are they proposing offers that ensure the district and by extension, each of you will continue breaking the law? Some administrators have promised they're working to fix the problem, but let's look at the facts. We're not moving towards compliance. In fact, we've moved further away. So when I hear people saying we're working on it, but I see the situation worse, and I have no choice but to doubt the sincerity of those statements. Right now, overall, we're living in several troubling times, so times when the president of this country actually seems to think they can just break any law they choose. I would hope that this board would see such disregard for our laws as something to condemn and not something to emulate. Students succeed because of the dedication of their instructors and of the other staff at this college, yet the dedication isn't reflected in the district's priorities. It's long past time to honor your legal and moral obligations to ensuring faculty salaries meet the standards set by law. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Come on up.
So, hi, my name is Lexi Air, and I also want to congratulate everyone who spoke and received awards. And I would just like to simply state that I started a student-led petition for fair wages for faculty and staff at the Napa Valley College. And that's about it.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, at this time, the board will move into closed session covering Conference of Labor Negotiators pursuant to Section Five Four Nine Five Seven Public Employment and Public Employee Performance Evaluation, and we will return at six thirty P M. Thank you. Uh, back from closed session, and I have, um, a report here in closed session. The Board of Trustees approved the following full-time classified administrative assignment. Peter Mintzer as Director Institutional Technology Operations, starting June second, twenty twenty-five. Director Institutional Technology Operations salary will be based on the Administrative Confidential Salary Schedule, Range Twenty-One, Step C. The salary will be prorated for any partial month of service. All right, public comment. This public comment opportunity is governed by the California Brown Act. By definition, this is an opportunity to hear concerns, perspectives, and differing vantage points. The board is not able, under the Brown Act, to engage in any level of conversation or discussion, but we look forward to this opportunity to gather community input. At this time, the board will devote up to fifteen minutes to review comment to the Board of Trustees regarding any subject not appearing as an agenda item for this meeting but over which the board has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will occur at this time on such items. Each comment shall last no longer than three minutes. Catherine, is there any public comment?
No, ma'am, no public comment.
Okay, thank you. We're onto Consent Calendar. This is an action item. Does any trustee have questions about any of these items?
Motion to approve Consent Calendar. As amended, I guess.
So, uh, trustee Dodd made the motion, and trustee Iverson seconded. Is there a public comment?
No public comment.
All right, roll call vote, student trustee Gonzalez. Aye. Trustee Baker?
Aye.
Trustee Kishanaf?
Aye.
Trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item fifteen, Administrative Services Information, uh, information item fifteen point one, Cash Flow Analysis, Mr. Reeves.
Thank you, President Olson. If, um, what's the signal, Catherine?
Here goes.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Members of the board, uh, we present this information annually to, um, to provide you, to provide you support information about the cash position of the institution. This is an important, um, um, assessment, uh, in that it provides, uh, information about whether the col- college needs to, uh, pursue, uh, uh, a TRAN. TRAN is a tax revenue advance note. Uh, some of you may be aware of those, but uh, in the past, I think we've done one, certainly in the last five years. I think trustee Baker might be familiar with that. Um, but I wanted to share with you where we are and, um, indicate that we will not be needing a TRAN, uh, certainly anytime soon. So our cash balances for the county treasury in April are forty million dollars. These are all funds, obviously. And at West America Bank, we have about six million, six point two million dollars. Can you scroll down a bit, please, Catherine? This is a graphic display of, of our funds available. This also includes about ten million dollars, um, in bond repayment funds. So, um, the, the cash available to the institution at any given time, certainly at this given time, is around thirty million dollars. Next, could you scroll down? Thank you. This is the total cash available at West America Bank as of April, and you can see, uh, this is where we write checks from, largely trust fund accounts. We have a purchasing fund in Fund Eleven, as we move to the right. Um, uh, federal fund for student aid. Um, a Cal, Cal Grant is interest-bearing account, a trust fund account, a revolving account, Fund Ninety-One. And, and the Fund Ninety-One revolving account is a second account. So these are, uh, the funds are sit here because they, they typically, uh, were writing checks against these for expenses incurred by various organizations on campus. She'll scroll down, please, uh, Catherine. This is total ca- cash at the treasury, the county treasury. You can see, uh, the beginning balance in twenty-four, twenty-five, what's, uh, what transactions occurred over the course of now, uh, ten months. Uh, you can see at the very bottom, a line, uh, total NBC cash at treasury is totaled forty million dollars. Over to the far right, you'll see the two areas that are, are, uh, funds reserved for bond payments, so just over, just around ten million dollars there. And so, uh, and so we are, we are in a very positive, uh, cash position. Scroll down, please. This is an important schedule because you can see, uh, in any, in any month and, and in a year, uh, around September, October, those tend to be our leanest, um, cash, uh, cash years. You can even see in twenty twenty-one, we're down to a million two and a million five, which is very, very lean. Um, but more recently, uh, we are looking at, um, uh, eleven, uh, eleven and thirteen million dollars, uh, during those periods, which is a healthy position. And that occurs, those, those lean periods occur, I'll remind you, because the tranches for property taxes arrive typically two times during the year. And so, uh, and so between those two tranches, we tend to get a little lean in the early fall. Is there another schedule there, Catherine? That's the end of the show. So the recommendation is that we do not need a financial instrument to support any cash demand for, uh, the foreseeable future here at Napa Valley College. I'll certainly entertain any questions.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Chair, could I? In terms of, uh, Vice President Reeves, wouldn't typically, I know there is some variation to it, but typically, what times of the year do we get the, um, deliveries from, uh, from the county?
Our initial delivery occurs, they like to say we get it in December. We often see it in early January.
Right.
And then we'll see some trickling right through April, and then we'll see some final, we'll even receive some final kind of residual revenue um, in July. It gets posted to June thirtieth, but we'll see some kind of finishing touches as they close out and reconcile books in, uh, in June and July.
So, and I, I, I won't hold you to this i- in terms of the amount, like, the, the delivery and, and distribution amounts in terms of the total annual allocation. Is it like, in that early, let's just say, conservatively, early January, is that like seventy percent?
Probably a little less than that.
Sixty percent?
Sixty percent or so.
Forty and then ten or something?
Or it could be sixty, yeah. It, it, yes, so it's a, it's a finishing act after the January, uh, depending on how, how payments are received and, uh, and, uh, and how they're processed by the county.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you. Um, action item fifteen point two, California Community College Chancellor's Office, Office Quarterly Financial Status Report, um, Mr. Reeves.
Thank you, President Olson. This will sound very redundant to most of us. This is, report is required that, uh, required to be shared with the, um, with the Board of Trustees on a, on a quarterly basis. This is very similar to the monthly reports I provide you, but, um, I don't want to get an email from the Chancellor's Office saying I never shared this with you. So this is the, for the third, uh, quarter, ending March thirty-first. Um, you can, you can see our unrest- You can see our unrestricted, the first section, Unrestricted General Fund Revenue Expenditures and Fund Balances. This is, um, these are our budgets in the far right column. And where we, where we started the budget you approved. And F.1 at the bottom gives you a sense of where our, our budgeted reserves are, are projected to be at 16.6%. Scroll down to the, to the B section, our, our general fund cash balance. This is our general fund, not all, all funds that I just shared with you, is, at the third quarter, was about $25.7 million. Down to Section 3, the Unrestricted General Fund Revenue Expenditure and Fund Balances. Our general fund revenues, we'd received at that point about 64%. Today, we're just over 90%, but this is as of March 31st. Our expenditures were at about 70.2%. And you can see our, their outgo is about 39%. And our total unrestricted expenditures were at about 68% through the third quarter. Next, scroll down, please. And this, these are the, the questions. Has the district settled any employee contracts during this quarter? No, we have not settled any. Did the district have significant events for the quarter? Including audit findings, et cetera? No. Question 5, excuse me, question 6. If yes, what are the, I'm sorry. Question 5 is significant events for the quarter? For financial transactions, including borrowing funds for trans, et cetera? No. And then no and no. So the nos are positive. With the caveat that, that agreement's settled, we have two open agreements. That's not exactly what the question they're asking there, they just wanted to know if we'd settled any. But as we all know, that we have two open collective bargaining agreements. So that concludes, concludes the report sent to the Chancellor's Office for the third quarter.
Move for approval.
Is there any public comment?
Okay. No, there's not.
Tracy Iverson made a motion.
Second.
And trustee Baker seconded. Is there discussion? All right, roll call vote, Student Trustee Gonzalez, aye. Trustee Baker, aye. Trustee Kishinev, aye. Trustee De Luna? Trustee De Luna? I think that was an aye with a giggle.
Aye.
Trustee Iverson, aye. Trustee Dodd, aye. Trustee Rios, aye. Right, motion passes. Information Item 15.3, '24, '25, Unrestricted General Fund 11, Mr. Reeves.
Thank you, President Olson. This is our, our monthly report. We are at 83% through the budget year. So look at that high, that right column, that's generally where we would compare both our revenues and expenses, remembering that these are all timing issues, but it's a general reference to where we are relative to our budget. As I just mentioned, this is, this is through April 30th or, or 10 months into our 12-month fiscal period. We're at 92% of our revenue received against what we, we budgeted. We still have two months, and as I mentioned earlier, perhaps some residual that will arrive in July. No particular reason for concern here. My, my concern, only concern is perhaps a minor reduction in property tax, just based on some, some small pieces of information we're hearing. But that remains to be seen. We're at 92%. About $977,000 received more at this time of the year than last year. But we're still trending below budget, certainly for the end of the year. Salaries under expenditures were at 78%, which, which looks very positive. However, recall that the earmark we have set aside for salaries for employees has not been spent. So that's a, that's a little deceiving at 78%. Now, when it does get spent, I suspect it will be, it will level over to, to accurately represent this as the budget. But certainly today, the salaries and benefits were under, were under budget. We're about $1.4 million under budget in salaries at this point, and about $638,000 under budget and benefits. For our books and supplies, we're still at 151%. Trustee Rios has, has continued to point that out to me. It's about $2,000. And we will correct that when our financial statements are completed. And we are 76%, so we're trending in total in a positive direction there. Our other operating expenses, we're at 82%, line 42, the total there. The variances, we're looking at 112% of budget at maintenance and repairs. That's a little disconcerting, given the variance there. But I think there may be some timing there, but I think there may be some, some budget adjustment necessary for next year. And our total expenditures are at about 76% or about $3.6 million under budget. So even when you add the salaries and benefits, we're still trending in a positive direction, a positive variance relative to, from, from expenditures relative to budget. So, um, the, the outlook is, is steady. And we look like we, we have, we'll have a positive impact on the reserve as we conclude this fiscal year. And it looks like we'll do quite, quite well there, though I will not put a prediction on how much will add to the reserve at this point.
Any questions, trustee Baker? I was just curious, well, two questions. First is, I think I've asked this before, just want to kind of confirm the high number on classified temporary that I'm assuming that's because of the low number for permanent classified, and so we're backfilling. Is that correct?
Yes, that's, that's a good part of the reason. Actually, in our budget processing this year, we're looking at perhaps needing to increase that budget. But we need a little better understanding. There is some backfilling there. We have several unfilled classified positions that, that are getting backfilled with TIA's temporary employee assignments. But we need to take a closer look at that and see how that will be offset when we fill those classified positions.
My second question is a little more to do with kind of the, well, the funding that we have set aside for the earmark for salaries. If we don't close a contract before the end of the fiscal year, does that money roll into next year to be able to pay for retroactive pay? What happens?
That's a great question, and here's the answer. What you will see, if we do not close contracts and pay retroactive in this fiscal year, those dollars will be added to the earmark for next year. But what we, what you will see is an inflated reserve at the end of this year. A temporarily inflated reserve at the end of this year because that, those, those funds fall to the bottom line, and then we add them to next year. So next year, you'll see two earmarks, one to cover this year, one to cover next year. And, and then our projected reserves will more closely align with our actual expenses. Does that make sense?
Any other questions? Trustee Dodd?
I'm just saying, it's a very good question.
Trustee Dodd approves of your question. All right. Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Action Item 16, Board Policy Review and Adoption. Is there a public comment?
Uh, no public comment.
Motion to approve.
Trustee Dodd, motion, trustee Iverson seconded. Is there discussion? All right, roll call vote, Student Trustee Gonzalez, aye. Trustee Baker, aye. Trustee Kishinev, aye. Trustee De Luna?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson, aye. Trustee Dodd, aye. Trustee Rios, aye. Motion passes. Information Item 16.2, Board Policies First Reading. Are there any questions or discussion? Okay. Moving on to President and Board Reports.
So we are concluding the spring semester next week, and then we'll be gearing up for summer term. And I want to provide a little bit of information about our summer classes. So in our ongoing efforts to mitigate fraud, we purged 264 ghost students from summer class rosters on Tuesday of this week. That was for a total of 686 seats. Classes that for some time had appeared closed are now open and available for registration. So we're getting that word out to folks for people who had been waiting to see when there would be availability. As of yesterday, there were 59 of 115 course sections that still had space, and all but two of the in-person sections have space. So we want to encourage people to sign up and register. We've also updated and adjusted our fraud mitigation efforts to prevent fraud attempts. And one of the biggest changes that applies this week and moving forward is that the applications coming from CCC apply are now going to be stopped before they're imported into our system. That had been something that we'd been working on for some time and required some programming specific to our college. So that is now in place, and we, I, I can already see by monitoring the enrollments that we're not experiencing the same deluge of enrollments that we have had for a few semesters now. So that's a huge improvement. Then I also wanted to highlight the Curriculum Committee's accomplishments for '24, '25. This has been a very, very busy year, and you can see from this chart. In addition to the regular curriculum work, of course, the Curriculum Committee has been reviewing board policies and administrative procedures and providing feedback on those. And you can see the list of 32 that were completed in this year. And on the left-hand side, you can see the number of courses, new courses, archived courses, meaning they have not been offered in some period of time, and so we're taking them off the books. So they will not appear in the college catalog or the course schedule. And then modified courses, this is a very important area because a course should be reviewed and modified every six years and for career technical education courses every two years. That is a cycle that had not always been followed. So we have a lot of catch-up to do, and we're phasing this out in year by year, which groups to really focus on, starting from the oldest, the ones that have not been reviewed for quite some time. So if we scroll down, there's a summary of the major reasons why there is so much that has been done in the Curriculum Committee. Looking back at the last 10 years of data, where this is the period we have recorded data for how many courses have been through the curriculum revision process. This year has had the highest level of completion of these types of revisions in the, then has occurred in the last 10 years. So it's really significant. That even compares to 2020, when we went online and had to add distance education addendums to every course. So we actually have done more work than in that year, which is saying something. The reasons for that are a few things. One, common course numbering Phase 1, which I've talked about a few times. It had six courses in it, but every program that lists that course also has to be updated so that we're not referencing the old naming of the course. However, even though that still is a very large chunk of work, recognizing that we had many courses that hadn't been reviewed in some time, we phased out the work for both archival of courses and programs and modification of courses and programs. So that accounts for another set of the work. And I do want to acknowledge a truly amazing curriculum team, Anna Clara Lesaros, the Curriculum Committee Co-Chair, Catherine Leeb, the Curriculum Specialist, and Stacy Howard, our Articulation Officer. Really incredible, they work with me in helping to set the goals for each year. And it is my intention to provide this kind of annual report each year at the end of the spring semesters that you can see the curriculum changes that are in place. And curriculum is really at the heart of what we do, because if we don't have a strong curriculum, our instruction suffers. So I really appreciate the work of the faculty and the team on this. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and community. Just want to start off first by acknowledging all the special recognitions this evening, and also all of our students who are graduating and transferring to university. I think it's amazing work you all are doing, and I very much look forward to continuing to, to see all the major accomplishments that you complete. But thank you for, for the amazing, for being our students. So I'm very excited about that and for all the important work that's happening out there at Napa Valley College. I wanted to also acknowledge the, the hard work, the heavy lift of the Career Center, specifically Dr. Sherry Tess and her team. They're putting on an amazing career fair on April 30th on campus. They impacted many, many students, many lives. Actually, I wrote 400, but it should be 800, over 800 attendees this past career fair. And I think it's, it really is, is a testament to, to the important work they've been doing with over 90 employers. So if you were able to make it out, you would see the effect and the impact it had. But I was very proud of the work that her team did. And it's the biggest we've had thus far, and I think we're only going to grow it. So, so I'm excited for that work. Also want to acknowledge the work that we did in Student Affairs along with Human Resources. Thank you VP Charles for all your work and leadership, and our PIO's office for her support for putting on an amazing Cinco de Mayo, the festival that we have, our celebration this past May 5th. It was an amazing activity we, we had on campus, brought a keynote speaker, some, we were able to hear him, Dr. Cesar Cruz, founder of Homies Empowerment, Aztec dancers, balearic clorico, campus tours, resources, food, and celebration, to just bring that cultura, that culture back to Napa Valley College, really celebrating comunidad and community. So I was very excited and honored to be able to, to bring that back to NBC in a very big way this, this past, this past year. The themes for the celebration were resistance, resiliency, and unity. So thank you all for who put that on. And finally, I just end with River Trail Village. We currently are at 36% occupancy so far, thus far, as of a day ago. 190 leases signed. So we're, we're trickling up, excited about that, that, that work. The team is very, is working really hard to make sure we align all of our services and supports to make sure students are able to onboard into River Trail and Napa Valley College in a much more seamless way. So I want to thank the teams that have really worked hard to put that on, from the River Trail Village team, the Asset Living team, and also Financial A in particular, and, and people in enrollment services to, to really make sure we, we brave the support for our students and that we set up a path for their success. So that's exciting. And also just the really important activities that are happening over at River Trail Village. The, there was a foster care awareness movie screening earlier this week. Really wanted to thank the Next Step folks for putting that on, helping to put that on. Next week, there's going to be finals week breakfast, so students can grab breakfast over at River Trail. I will be hosting, it says breakfast, but I'm not sure. Maybe it'll, it'll be something else, some corn chowder or something, but I'll be taking care of breakfast out there for a day. And tomorrow's the block party barbecue from 2 to 4 o'clock at River Trail. Reminder, a week from today, we are in commencement, so I'm very excited about that. It's starting at 6 o'clock. So that concludes my report.
A brief report from Administrative Services. A reminder that the June meeting is, is the meeting in which we will look at the tentative budget. I call it the 12-week budget because it effectively gets us through the summer and on to the final budget in September. So I'll look forward to that. I wanted to provide you an update on the student housing audit. It has been, um... We're looking at a final meeting in July. I would, I would just say that, that the Napa Valley College is not, is not getting signaled that there's anything to, to be concerned about here. Again, they're looking at college and university housing at the UC, the CSU, and, and the community college. So no particular reason for concern there. Institutional technology, the District Committee is looking forward to, will be looking at the first draft of the Technology Master Plan, I hope, next week. So that is, and that, that consideration and, and vetting will occur, will occur next fall, when everyone's back on campus, and I anticipate being able to bring that to the Board of Trustees for their consideration during the next fall semester. Just to add to Alex's report on student housing, we're also doing some contract student housing this summer with Bottle Rock and a few other organizations that will generate, so far, uh, uh, the commitments are around three hundred thousand dollars in additional revenue to, to, um, to River Trail Village and, and to their budget. So, um, uh, big thanks to Asset Living and, and others who have, uh, pushed hard to get, uh, to make that available to our, our community partners. From a, from, at the Wine Education Center, um, uh, board members may want to provide an update, so I will defer to them, but, uh, phase one is on track, uh, scheduled to be completed in, um, in, uh, June, uh, and phase two is a work in progress, uh, uh, to, uh, see what we can do about, uh, the budget on that one. So I'll defer to my, to, to, uh, members of the board for further report there. The campus solar solution was approved by the board of trustees at their, at their, um, April meeting, and, uh, we're working with, uh, forefront energy now and housing to develop a schedule that we will, uh, uh, we will roll forward and, and provide more information about that. Excuse me, that construction schedule moving forward. I would just, uh, um, add that we have a few projects, uh, construction projects in the queue as well. They're in development. One is at the SAC, the Student Activity Center. I think some of you may have heard about that. It's, uh, Dr. Munzami is, uh, providing some support to that, and, uh, we can anticipate bringing more information to the board as we move forward. Also, there is in development consideration for relocating the Basic Needs Center from a facilities perspective to a larger space. So, uh, you, you can look forward to getting more reports from, from Alex and others about that project. It's, it's a construction project as well. So that would conclude my report.
Good evening. In the Office of Human Resources, and me, um, if you haven't heard, we're still negotiating with both of our collective bargaining units. We are also busy with recruiting, and we're seeing a lot of progress. I want to thank you board for approving, um, tonight's hires. In the Office of Title IX of Civil Rights, we want to thank everyone who participated in two events. The NBC Pride Walk a Mile team, they did exceed their goal, their donation goal in support of Napa News. And also thank you all who participated in Take Back the Night. I'm very happy to know that with partnership with River Trail Village, they are developing a walking buddy program. And as I have more information about this program, I will bring an update to the board. I will encourage all of you at this time, if you have a cell phone and you are on the gram, being Instagram, to please follow at NBC underscore Title IX underscore OCR. That is our Instagram account. As of right now, we have two hundred following. Imagine if you too go on Instagram and follow us. Get the word out, we have good information, and it's also a great way of being notified of all of the activities coming out of this office. Couple of other, um, events that I want to highlight is, um, upcoming trainings on healthy boundaries and relationships and microaggressions and biases. We have established great partnerships, both with River Trail Village and Mentis, as well as community partners, in putting on these very important events, um, with the focus of education and maintaining a safe campus. I want to let you all know, um, in relations to our bias education response team, I've been told by Chief Wade yesterday that as of today, we have the largest BERT team in the history of her being here. So I'm very happy about that, and we had a really good meeting, and we are in the right direction of being able to assess what's going on and how we handle, um, circumstances on our campus, and also look for opportunities for additional education and collaboration. Once again, I provide every single month the demographics of what our staff and faculty look like on our campus. And I am continually, um, proud of the work that my team does to diversify our applicant pools so that slowly over time, we are improving and continually maintaining, um, our diversity amongst our employee groups. That is reflective of our student base, and that's my report. Thank you.
This concludes president area reports. Thank you all.
All right, thank you. Are there any, uh, requests for future agenda items? Okay, how about a, um, report from CCCT trustee Deluna?
Nothing to report at this time.
How about DOS trustee Iverson?
Uh, we're meeting next month.
VWT trustee Rios?
Yeah, we met, uh, yesterday, and to just add a couple of items to Mr. Reeves', uh, report. I, I won't mention that that was the longest meeting I've ever been to for the VWT, but, um, a couple of exciting items. Tony Baldini was, uh, approved as a new board member, uh, Michael's brother. He does kind of look like Michael, but younger. And so that, that was an exciting appointment to the board, given all his, uh, his experience in the industry. We still have, uh, one vacancy on the board, but, excuse me, because I forgot the person's name, but a person has, has been identified and, uh, will, wants to serve. Just need to finish the process as the person's, I think, out of state or out of the country at the moment. Uh, so that vacancy should be filled, um, by the next, next meeting. Looks like the wine sales are up a bit, uh, from last year, though still kind of struggling a little bit with inventory and, and wine, um, to meet the, uh, club, club demand. Apparently, we've got a waiting list, but not enough wine to, uh, service, uh, that many. So it's currently capped. Uh, I think those were the other items of, uh, interest, and that concludes the report.
Thank you trustee Rios. Uh, trustee Dodd, how about an NBC Foundation report?
Yes. Thank you President Olson. As Vice President Reeves was alluding to, um, you, everything has been moving very smoothly on the WEC, uh, phase one. Phase two, and I don't know how, uh, detail we need to get, but, um, you know, construction costs came in significantly higher, um, than originally anticipated. Um, the board approved to backfill that difference based on the, there was only one proposal submitted for, um, in response to our, RFP. So we're basically just working with one, uh, contractor right now. But we did, the board did approve backfilling or meeting that commitment to, um, allow for funding available for those increased construction costs out of the Evelyn Allen, um, grant that we received a few years ago. But the board is, is really intending, seeing different ways that they can efficiently get that cost down, um, significantly further. And so I think that the, the project will continue to move forward and, and looking at every ways that, every way that, you know, we can cut costs. Would that fairly summarize it's, um, uh, that issue? Terms of, uh, uh, foundation's annual giving, uh, awarded this year in terms of number of scholarships, a hundred and eighty, uh, scholarships awarded. Um, there were approximately three hundred and thirty-two hundred thousand dollars, uh, in awards granted for this year. It's pretty significant, um, I would say. In terms of housing scholarships, too, uh, over thirty-seven thousand dollars, uh, total have been given this year from the foundation for housing grants. Uh, but in addition to that, uh, you're really excited to, um, receive, um, a bequest from the, uh, Gene Schroeder Education Trust, an amount of nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars of this year allocated to, um, needy students attending Napa Valley College. The board, uh, committed to giving half of that money for housing scholarships over a three-year period, and the rest to, uh, to fill in for our annual scholarship giving at the end of every single year. So all, all good things to report.
Thank you trustee Dodd, it's exciting. Uh, trustee and board chair report, student trustee Gonzalez, your last report for us.
Good evening, President Jenny Olson, board of trustees, President Dr. Powell, and cabinet members. As I conclude my term as student trustee, I want to sincerely thank you all for all your support throughout the last year. Thank you for being so welcoming to me since the very beginning and throughout my term as student trustee. Being student trustee was such an amazing experience, and I learned a lot and, um, gained a deeper understanding of shared governance, and I will definitely be taking all the lessons I learned throughout this past year with me as I move forward. It was an amazing opportunity and helped me grow into a more confident student leader on campus. I want to also thank you again for supporting ASNBC's trip to Washington DC. It was an unforgettable experience that showed us the impact of advocacy on a national level. And again, it's going to be one of my best memories. I greatly appreciate your commitment to student success. Thank you again for everything.
Thank you, student trustee Gonzalez. Trustee Kishinev?
I have no report.
Trustee Baker?
Well, I've been busy coming, I've been on campus a lot for mostly all these events. I get to eat a lot of cake this time of year. So, um, I started out, uh, with the Ed Shank Award. I went to that. I barely missed the career fair, uh, but I did see Sherry afterwards, and she looked wrung out. So I know it was a, a long day. So, um, I went to the McPherson Award and then went to, and loved those presentations, the, the little, uh, ed talks that they make, just made me want to go back to school. Very inspiring, and, uh, both of them just really, uh, exemplified, you know, what we do here and why we do it. So I'm really, uh, very grateful we got to do that for them. Then I went to the Phi Theta Kappa, uh, or, um, induction ceremony, then to the EOPS celebration. Went to the Asian Pacific Islander Culture Night, which was really a treat. I mean, that was, I, I don't, I don't know what I was expecting, but it was, it was a lot of fun, and the dancing was just fantastic. And I'm trying to get ahold of those kids, or students, so I could get them to come and dance at my library. I participated in NBC Pride Walk a Mi- Walk a Mile team, uh, for, uh, Napa Emergency Women's Services. And then, uh, was able to go to the student art show right before coming here, and had a lot more to do next week. Uh, so just want to give an early congratulations, uh, to all of our grads, and then, uh, also congratulations to the retirees this evening and, uh, all of our award winners from the last couple of weeks. And, uh, speaking of graduates, a different type of graduate. If you are so inclined, uh, Thursday, June fif- fifth, June fifth, the NBC will be hosting grad night again, and we're always looking for volunteers. It's a lot of fun, uh, should come out and, uh, join us, dress warmly. It's always really cold. That's all I have.
Thank you trustee Baker. Do you have a room in our dorms yet for all the time you spend here? Uh, trustee Dodd?
Nothing. Update.
Trustee Iverson? Trustee Rios?
Uh, no report.
Uh, and that leaves me, I, um,
And trustee Deluna doesn't have a report.
Sorry about that. Trustee Deluna?
No report.
Okay, thank you. I just have a few things to share. I attended DK and EOPS ceremonies and also, um, Dr. Powell's forum that he had a couple of weeks ago, which I found very, um, just transparent and insightful, and I just really love the way you engage with our faculty and, um, and staff. Appreciate that you're always willing to kind of be, you know, just be open about what's going on and, and available for our, our community. And I'm excited about AC and NBC breakfast tomorrow. Hopefully, I'll see you there, trustee Baker. And, um, commencement next week, I'll be there tomorrow night, too. And then I also just wanted to share that it's May, which is Mental Health Awareness Month, and my other job, I'm, I work for a mental health agency and, um, do a lot of advocacy around mental health. And this month, it's really, um, important time to raise awareness around mental health, break stigma around mental health, and, and really increase access to people who need mental health services. So, um, it's, you know, that's what we're all about at Mentis, and happy May, happy Mental Health Awareness Month. That's my report, and I think my last page blew away, but I think the only thing left is announcement of our future meeting on June twelfth. You have my extra page, fans are on my, my whole agenda. Okay, um, we have our, uh, thank you, we have our retreat, our board retreat on June twelfth, and our regular meeting on June eighteenth. Sorry, we have our regular meeting on June twelfth and our special board retreat on June eighteen. Meeting is adjourned, thank you. Meeting is adjourned at seven fifteen.